Turn by Woodville, have the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item would be the approval of May 5th, 2015, and May 12th, 2015, special motion, please. Mr. Curry made the motion. Mr. Wilkerson said. Is that in law you spoke?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's see. Did we have anyone to sign in?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we'll go to our public comments. Now, we had some, I guess this is something we need to do regarding the budget, the first item, following comments from any members of the public signing in. There aren't any, but the board will be open for public comments regarding the proposed 2015-16 budget. Any comments that we need to know about that at this time?
I'll just go over a little bit in finance section.
Okay.
Five minutes or less.
This just gives the public, if they have any comments, the opportunity to voice those, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, now we'll go down to presentations, information. First, we have Tara Hager, and I'm not sure if Jenny Hefflin or Dishka Payton were speaking. The members want to, please come forward.
You can do it however. You can go walk up. Okay, I'm not sure what I'm allowed to say.
Well, once again, you're on the agenda there, so we can reverse what we were, when you signed in, we could. That's really the only difference.
Okay.
The only thing I would caution you on is, you know, you wouldn't, you don't want to say something that might be considered slanderous or something. Not that we can prohibit you from doing that, I'm just saying you want to be careful about that. So oftentimes, you can state your case without admitting individuals, but I really can't prohibit you from doing that. I'm just kind of saying you want, might want to watch that for your own protection.
Okay.
Okay.
My question is, is the first, you guys heard of the incident was the day that I was here? And was that the full story? Did you hear of only what maybe Rudd coming to told Patricia or like, I hope the full story got out there, not just, you know, a jot down from this person and a jot down from that person?
Let me explain the procedure, okay?
Okay.
Just in this or any other, the superintendent of schools has the authority to suspend employees, or let me rephrase it, to disciplinary, take disciplinary action against employees. That could be giving them an oral reprimand, saying you didn't do this correctly, whatever. It could be a written reprimand that she has placed in her personnel file that stays there. It could be a recommendation for suspension of up to 30 days, or it could be, she could recommend that the board terminate that person or fire them. Now, on those last two, the suspensions and terminations must be approved by the Board of Education. So Mrs. Lucas can suspend an employee for disciplinary action up to 30 days, anything beyond that would depart the board, but up to 30 days without our knowledge at that time. At some point, though, assuming that she did that, she would have to come before the board and make a recommendation for us to ratify or approve that suspension. So during this process, the board is not privy to what is going on because we employ the superintendent to administer the school system, and that's what she does. And in her instances like this, what she does is look at the facts that have been presented or whatever the action, if it's incident here or any other of that matter. She then investigates that, talks to all the parties involved, could be Mr. Cummings, as you said, it could be any number of people, could be parents, could be you all for that matter. And then, after she's conducted her investigation, she has to make a decision if she thinks that that individual was guilty of the infraction that's been asserted. And then, once she's made that determination, if she feels like that the person is guilty of that infraction, she has to make a decision as, well, what am I going to do about them? How severe is this infraction? I could use that word. And if, once again, it could be any of those things I just mentioned. If it were something that's not a real severe nature, and this employee had a good record and there's no ad marks on there, she might think it's necessary. If that person, if it was more serious, the infraction, she might think it was necessary to give them a written reprimand that would be placed in her personnel file and probably would be reflected on their evaluation that they had. Or, as you move up the ladder, if it were more serious, she could make, she might give that a suspension in order.
That was my question, is, is there things that goes just as far as her before it ever comes to you?
Yes, ma'am. And that's the reason I was saying that, is because at some point, when she, if she's made a decision, that'd be a suspension or a termination, she then has to, notice, typically bring the employee in and speak to that person and say, you know, I've looked into your case, and she's given that person the opportunity to tell her their side of the story. She, and she would be, say, I've looked into your case and I've decided you're innocent or you're guilty and you're, because of the nature of your infraction that you, that I feel you're guilty of, I'm going to, let's say in this instance here, we're just hypothetically saying, I'm going to suspend you for so many days. And then, when she tells that employee that, says, now, you know that you will have a right to have a hearing before the board before any official action happens. At that time, after that meeting occurred, she would then send out a letter to the person and she would kind of reiterate what she had said, you know, we had this meeting and I feel like you were wrong in what you did and because of that, I'm going to recommend that you be suspended for so many days. And she would send that in writing to that individual. And when she did that, she would send a copy to us. And on that, in that letter, it would say, not the particulars of what happened, but that, you know, you're guilty of this, in my opinion, I'm going to be, I'm recommending you be suspended and you have a right to have a hearing before the board, and it would have a date on there. And get back to my office, and she would give them a certain amount of time to get back to her if they wanted to have a hearing. If the employee chooses to have the hearing, they would come before the board and then it would be up to them whether they open or close publicly. And if the employee wanted to have a closed hearing, we'd go into a hearing, we'd hear their side, we'd hear the superintendent's side, and then eventually, after that was over, the superintendent would have on the agenda an action to suspend that employee, and then we would vote on it. So that's why I'm saying, all these things that happened beforehand, although sometimes we hear things, you know, we aren't really privy to them until we set as a body, kind of like a judge would, you know, we aren't to hear one side or the other until, you know, they come before us and both sides can present their case.
Okay. So has the investigation been finished?
Yes.
And when was that completed?
Probably from the day that you came to see me, it was probably 10 days.
The first or second time?
The first time.
So there was a decision before I was here last?
Last week.
Last week?
There was.
Because it's been almost a month since the incident has happened.
Exactly. But, but there are timelines, and as Mr. Chrisley explained, you know, giving the employee opportunity, giving them due process, if, if they request a hearing, then we have to set a time for them to be able to do that. And then, if they choose not to, then we proceed.
And can you answer, did he have that hearing? Did, can you, I mean, is that liable, is that too personal or?
There have not been any hearings recently. I can't recall the last hearing we've had, so I'll say that.
Okay, and can I know her recommendation that she brought to you guys?
Only after we act on it.
Okay.
So is it completed, though, like it's?
Mrs. Lucas has indicated to me that she's completed her investigation, so at this point, she's preparing, prepared to make a recommendation to us.
Is that recommendation tonight, or has she done recommended what she wants?
It hasn't happened before tonight.
Okay. But there's, there are going to be a rule in the punishment, how long will it be before?
Soon.
Soon?
Yes.
As soon as you, I don't.
I'm trying to walk a fine line.
I know, but I don't know what I can, what, I mean, I don't.
I'm just saying that all the steps that the superintendent is required to do have occurred. We're at the phase now where she has recommended to the board to take action, and once that action occurs, the board votes, then in these instances, the person's name will be made public and all, those kind of things.
Yeah.
We don't do that, we can't until it happens, because it's possible that the superintendent makes a recommendation to the board and we say no, we don't agree with it, and we don't think that person should have been suspended or fired or whatever it is.
Okay.
And therefore, we wouldn't be releasing the individual's name because, you know, they really haven't been found guilty by us anyway of that. But if, and the person is found to be guilty of that infraction, and once the board votes on that, then that, those, that name would be made, made public.
Okay. So once it's public, then I, I should be able to know what had happened and?
Oh, yes. As will everyone.
Okay.
Mr. O'Donoghue from the Lincoln Journal, whenever he's been through this process, after we vote, he always looks at us because we know that that means he wants to know who that was. So then, at that point, Mrs. Lucas usually will give him the name of the person that was involved.
Another question I have is, what is the actual procedure if something was like this to happen again? What should have that bus driver done? Do you, I mean, is there not a handbook? Like, does he not have to follow? I mean, like, when you get, trying to be a bus driver.
Once again, you're speaking, we're speaking, I'm not talking about anybody in particular here. What I would suggest, since I said that action was going to happen soon, then after that, that you ask those questions of Mrs. Lucas or Mr. Cummings. Or even if we don't, you can ask them that type of question. If you have any, if there's anything that's happened down on a bus route, whether it's come to the superintendent's attention or not, you always have the right to ask Mr. Cummings, you know, is this right, what this person did, even if no charges have been made against him. So you can ask that regardless.
Just that day in particular, there was a communication breakdown, whether it was at the school or through the bus line, like, because one day prior to that, the water was up and we got the phone call that the bus wasn't running, and we went to the school and picked him up. But that day, we didn't get that phone call that the bus wasn't coming that way, but the lady that was up there, she got the call. So I don't know where that breakdown was at.
Well, and I think that would be a legitimate question that could be posed.
Yeah.
And I'm certain that the superintendent during her investigation has taken into consideration for the, for the driver.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that call should have come from the school saying, hey, you know, the bus can't come all that way, so I didn't know where that.
That's something that I can't answer for you, but somebody should be able to give you an answer to that as to why that didn't happen. There was a breakdown somewhere, obviously.
Who makes that call to cancel the school? Like, I mean, when we're already in session and then?
The superintendent is the only person that can, can close schools.
Okay, well, she, because she dropped her child off at 10 o'clock that morning, he, you know, they had overslept or whatever, but an hour and 40 minutes later, they closed school. Did they not already know that? Why could they have not, you know, said something instead of, you know, just taking evidence and not stated, hey, you know, we're on the verge of, you know, maybe closing school because of the high water?
Once again, you're, you're talking at the school level, you know, the principal and secretary, who may, they're not privy to what Mrs. Lucas is thinking until she makes a decision. And once, you know, all the various schools out there, she may be gathering information, and then once she makes a decision, she advises the schools. They may be thinking, hey, you know, we may be getting out of school, but they don't know until she lets them know or her office does. And I mean, I'm, you know, I've been a school principal myself, and I've waited for the board office to let me know if we were going to let it out, so the water's getting out, you know, or something, but I don't really know, but, you know, they're just gathering information. But ultimately, the superintendent, like when it's snowing and all that, and whether they're going to have school or not, the superintendent makes that decision. Once again, that's, we hire the superintendent to administer the school system, and the day-to-day things aren't really something we get involved in. So when school gets called off, it wasn't me, it was the superintendent.
I wasn't sure if you made that call anyway, if it was actually the whole board or?
Unless it's a good thing, then I'll take credit. No, it's, but no, all those kind of things are the superintendent's decision. And, and once again, in order to make those decisions, they're going to contact Mr. Cummings and different bus drivers and, and people. Oftentimes, I know what I would do when I was here was, I'd contact individuals that live in the area and say, hey, is the water getting out? You kind of know who to talk to to see. Then you have to, it's a judgment call, you know, when you call school off when it starts to snow, you know, you don't know, but you have to make the decision.
And that's another thing I asked, actually, the bus driver himself, when him and Rudd I met over at the bus garage, was how he knows or who he relies on to tell him that. I just, I can't fathom that, it's 2015 and we rely on Bobby Joe up the street saying, oh, yeah, the water's up, that, you know, you need not to run the bus here and close school. I just?
I think they, and I can't speak for them, but what I would think they would do, that they would rely on a combination of things. They're going to be talking to the weather, you know, getting the weather from the advisory, I guess, or some type of formal thing. Now, they're going to see what the weather's coming is, but at the same time, but just like when it snows, they go out early in the morning, oftentimes, it's probably Mr. Meek in there, then it goes out and checks these roads at 4:00 in the morning to see what's going on. They'll contact State Road, what's going on. In these instances, I'd say they do the same thing. But at the same time, there are certain places where the water gets up, all over this county, and there, and typically, we know, or, you know, the people, the drivers know, they know who these individuals are, and they'll kind of serve as a contact form, hey, how's the water where you live? And that helps them, so it's a combination of all these factors that helps them make a decision.
Like you said, in the morning times, though, they are, are required to go out and see what the conditions are? Why are they not required again in the evening to do that? Because that's an eight-hour timeframe that something could have happened.
Usually, we're required not. They do it, I think, based upon their judgment. Oftentimes, that would require, you know, in order to do it, it might require you going there, or, but it's going to be a combination of things, me talking to people who live there, getting their weather forecast, and in addition to maybe having, you know, Mr. Cummings or somebody go out and look at things. It could be, all those things have to be taken into consideration. But, you know, to call off school or to, you know, make that decision is a, one that you have to rid away, you know, is it something we want to do? Safety would be the primary concern, obviously, but sometimes, you know, school gets called off because you, you make a bad call, you think it's going to snow four or five more inches and it quits snowing, you know. We had a blizzard one time, the governor called a national or a state emergency, and the sun came out, so, you know, those things happen. But it's just a judgment thing, but it should be based upon, requiring as much information as you can from that area. That's why sometimes you'll maybe hear a school being called off or let out in one area, not in another, because the water gets up in one place and not in another.
Okay. Now, once the, I say, he, the punishment has been done, does he have to go through some kind of training or reapply for that, that route again, or how, I mean, is he like going to be?
It depends on the punishment. Once again, if we're talking about, if someone's suspended, that's what they are, suspended, and they can be suspended with pay, or they can be suspended without pay. Once again, the superintendent makes that decision based upon the seriousness of what's happened. And if there could be circumstances to where she might think that it's necessary for a person to acquire some training, I don't know if they, you know, not because, I can't say in this instance, but there could be circumstances that go on in schools or anywhere else that they think that the person involved needs to, you know, kind of be hung up on some things that they might need to know more about. It's not, it doesn't have to be required unless she would require it and the board affirms it. So if she were to say, I'm going to suspend so-and-so, or I'm going to recommend so-and-so be suspended for so many days, and in addition to that, I want them to receive counseling, or I want them to go to this training, and if she recommended that and the board approved it, that's what the person would have to do. So a lot of it gets back to her investigation, what she thinks is appropriate, and then getting the board to agree that that's.
Can we hear what she has, I guess, brought to you guys? Or is that allowable or?
No, not, not really. She hasn't brought anything to us. Once again, we haven't had a hearing. That employee asked for a hearing.
Okay.
Now.
Didn't I ask that while ago? Didn't he ask, he asked for you?
Yeah, directly. I'm saying, yeah, thank you, sir. I'm just saying that the employee, you know, if I've done something and I know I was wrong, I'm probably not going to ask for a hearing. If I think it's fair, and I'm getting the disciplinary action that was fair, I'm going to say, you know, I, I did that, I deserved this punishment, you know, I messed up, and I'm going to accept it. I'm going to ask for a hearing, and, and when I meet with the superintendent, she's going to tell me what she's going to recommend, and I'm going to say, that's fair, I understand, you know, I just really messed up, and I'm going to accept it. I'm not going to ask for a hearing. So she's going to recommend it to the board. In most cases, what happens at that time, if the board isn't really fully informed as much as they would like to be, or if they have additional questions other than maybe the letter they've gotten, then they would ask to go into executive session to ask some questions. And when we do that, and then, we wouldn't vote or anything, we just ask her if there's something that we didn't want to clarify, we could ask her, because when we actually vote, it'll be out in public.
Okay. And this goes on his record for?
Eternity.
Eternity, so it's, I mean, like, I didn't know, like?
If, if a person is suspended, they have, every, every employee of the Board of Education has a personnel file, and it includes their evaluations each year, and if they ever have any disciplinary actions, oral reprimand, you know, written reprimands, suspensions, any of those things that happen to them, and their evaluations are all in that personnel file, and they, they remain in there.
Can I, does he, did he know this lady, or has this been, have you guys talked to him to know if he knew this lady, or if it was just random, like, you're here, can I just let you off?
Then, you're talking about things that we don't know for ourselves, so I can't answer that.
So how do I get, I guess I'm confused. How do I get to know that you guys know about the whole situation and it's going to, something's going to come out of this?
When the, when the board takes action. Soon.
Okay, and we know about it from what you told us, so, you know, we're aware of it now, at that time, we weren't, but we are now.
And we talked to Superintendent Lucas a couple times about it, and she conducted an independent investigation about it, and what comes to us to ultimately review and vote on will be a culmination of all that. So we'll vote about it before we vote.
The only difference is, we probably know more than we typically do ahead of time.
But we haven't talked to him, you know, we've heard about the, the Ms. Lucas has.
Right.
It's her place to.
The only way we would talk to him is if he asks for a hearing, assuming it's a he.
Okay.
All right. I think, what are you saying, you've had most of your questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Bill Lamble, you want to talk to us about student evaluation? Mr. Lamble, Special Education Director.
Sir?
I'll be talking about, you're going to tell us.
First on here, it's our spring games are this, this Thursday, there's the schedule, and we'd like for you to come out if you could, to the parade, or come out to the awards if you have time. I appreciate if you come out and support our, our students. And I know there's a concern about Special Olympics, and we had, I have a appointment in the chair, just Ms. Lucas just called, made the appointment, the 26th, at 1:00, go talk to the ladies at Charleston, about the same lady, that lady's gone, about trying to get back into Special Olympics. I made sure she was gone.
And you all got to talk about that probably.
The second page there is, you know, I like to share a little data, going back to when I went back to Special Ed, December, officially in January, looking at some needs that we had. If you look 2012-13, we had 771 Special Education students. 13-14 went to 809, 14-15, 804. We're getting a lot more students. But when you look at the number of referrals, we went from 185 to 212 to 234 this year, and the year's not over, so we're continuing to get a lot more referrals. Triangles, those are done every three years on our students, that went from the angle when they're identified as a, as a Special Need student. So that's, there's a lot of need there. Our number of limited English proficiency students, 12-13 was one, 13-14 was two, this year we have 10. Okay, now, what does that mean, Lynden, what does that mean to us? Well, first, when students come, we have to do an initial evaluation on the students with limited English proficiency. And then, each year from kindergarten on, we have to give them assessment, state assessment called West Test. You know, we have the West Test, it starts at the third grade, well, with the limited English proficiency, we have to give those tests every year to those students, and our psychologists do that. What I'm here to ask for, or board to consider, if you look down, in the last three or four years, we had two diagnosticians back there, okay? And each one of them made $74,000 each. Those positions were cut, okay? They did a lot of these triangles, the reevals, they did a lot of that information. Since that time, they left, a lot of this was assigned to teachers to pick up the triangles and everything. So being a Special Ed teacher, you know, being a teacher's a tough job, but being a Special Ed teacher, you have to teach, plus you have to do IEPs, you have to do these triangles, you have to do bill for Medicaid, and we're taking a lot of valuable time away from our teachers to do this, these things. Medicaid billing change for teachers. It used to be that we billed once a month for, for Medicaid. Now, they do it in 15-minute intervals. In order for us to recover the same amount of money that was, we were for Medicaid, those teachers have to do seven 15-minute intervals a month to get the same amount of money that we were getting for billing one time before, okay? And we cannot tell those teachers, you know, we've been told that we can't say you have to do seven because it'd be, it'd be fraud, because some will be due, but we want to encourage them to do the ones that apply that we can, but we want to take some of the extra work off of them, that, that they're having to do so that they would be able to do that, like the triangles and so forth. What we're asking for, if the board to consider, is we'd like to have a lead psychologist, which would be 22, not 22, 20 extra days, and that total, with benefits and everything, would be $5,800. Now, you understand, we lost two possessions that were $74,000 each.
How many psychologists do you have?
We have two, and the reason I'm looking at 20 extra days, we have two, and one of them does not want to work any extra days, I'd like for each one of them to do 10, but one says, I don't want any other employment days, I want my summers off, so. So what this person, if you would look, I have a draft job description, a lot of it is the same as our past job description, but I kind of highlighted some of the new duties that this person would do. Number four, would assist teachers in completing the documentation for the triennial assessments, because there's a long list of things you have to consider. We don't always reevaluate every student every three years, we look at the data, but it's, it's hard for teachers to gather that information. It's easier for us if we would just gather that and have them set up for the teachers and give them to them so that they could do that. Another issue you can see are referrals, what they went to. I've been talking to Campbell County, and I have a mentor down there, she's real good, Karen Beasley, and I, and I appreciate it, and I asked her, I said, well, what is the process you guys do for referrals? And she sent it to us, and I've shared it with our psychologists, and, and they like it. But one of the things they do is the psychologist would attend the last student assistant to. But one of the things they do is the psychologist would attend the last student assistant team meeting before that referral's made, to be tested, okay? Under counseling and behavior support, this person would provide and coordinate interventions for crisis teams, like when a student had death, suicide, or something like that. Fourteen, would they conduct all the manifestation meetings, when we have special needs students that are being suspended more than 10 days. And number fifteen was a request that we'd been talking about, they would also coordinate the return of special ed students from ALC to the home school. You know, they would keep on, and they would check in with those students for two, three days, make sure everything's all right, because the problems we have of that student, just all of a sudden, they show up at the high school, no one knows they're showing up, so that, that's... And then, Title III is the limited English proficiency, and those are the things that are required under that. You know, like I said, it was one, it wasn't any problem, but now we have 10, you know, and that may increase, and that may decrease, we don't know as students move in. And under number 26, train teachers and administrators in the SAT process, using West Virginia Support for Personalized Learning. We used to have a program called RTI, Response to Intervention, and teachers and administrators, people were trained on that. So, when a student would have difficulty, they would use a lot of these strategies for interventions, to try to make those corrections before they would refer. And then, we changed over support for personalized, personalized learning, and since that time, we have not trained teachers or administrators on the parts of that, that would cut down on some of these referrals. Close, you know, referrals are, you can see how much, how much they grow, and I'm afraid the younger students are gonna continue to grow with some of the problems that we're having out there. But I just wanted to present this, and let you guys think about it, consider it. If you have any questions, I'll, I'll answer them.
Mr. Lambert, on training the teachers and administrators, would that take place during the school year, during...
It could be during the school year, it could be during the summer, it's, it could be at different times, it could be after school, but it's, you know, there's some hoops we would be jumping through before we refer students, and we're not doing that. We're just turning them in, there should be some interventions, we've tried this for so long, this worked, this student does not need to be referred, we need to meet again, this is working, we can visit them while, or if it's not working, just think of other interventions.
The number of referrals we're talking about, does other counties experience the same thing, the problems we have?
Talking to, we have a, recent special ed directors at the younger ages, yes, they are, they are, and if it's going, it's going to continue, I know, and it's, and I don't know what we could do about it. Some of the behaviors we see in younger students now, preschool, kindergarten, is, you know, we've got to do a better job of training our people on how to handle those, and that's one of the things we're gonna do this summer with our teachers, we're gonna have a whole day on behavioral management, how to cut those behaviors off before they happen, and so forth.
I just want to ask, is it proposal to abolish one of the positions, to impose it from a 200 to a 220-day position, or is it to add?
It would not be adding another person.
I mean, that versus adding 20 days to the existing job?
Yes.
Adding 20 days to the existing job?
Either way.
Well, that may lead into, or my question leads into that, these things that you have highlighted, are they just exclusively for this?
Lead psychologist, yes.
So, I guess, kind of what Rowley said, it seems like you'd need two job descriptions then, would you? That the psychologist would have to...
We have a current psychologist's job description.
And it does not include these highlighted items?
No, it does not.
But, but the lead psychologist, if a psychologist will do the same job 90% of the time, with the lead psychologist performing these tasks, say, the other 10, 15, 20%, correct?
But they won't be doing these highlighted things?
The lead would, the other psychologist would...
The other would, right. The only, the only one that both would be doing would be number five, because our psychologists are assigned to, to different schools, so they would be doing number five.
Trying to clarify the two individuals, that's what their duties are, and just adding 20 days, and calling this personal insight, because they would really have a different job description, we need to think through how we do that.
Okay, this is the different job description?
Well, I know, but then it gets back to what Rowley asked there before, would that person no longer be categorized as a psychologist with that old job description, because they're gonna have a new one, that's how we're gonna transition into that, I mean, I...
Okay.
So, it's clear, and I don't know what would ever happen, I just crossed that bridge, we can't, if we ever got two psychologists, and both of them wanted to share the duties, and they wanted to be two teams, then we'll cross that bridge.
Well, that's, that's, but, I mean, there's, there's just a great need, and, you know, and it's, with this limited English proficiency, it's really, it's actually hitting another employee to have that.
I think everybody understands it, you just figure out the technicalities of the job description, it's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Angie Easton?
Or Cindy Cooper?
Or?
That's on Angie.
Cindy, either one of them?
I was kinda broken.
We know how that is. Won't you just identify yourself with the board?
Sure. My name's Dustin Lambert, I teach at Lincoln County High School, I'm completing my third year of teaching there, and I'm not originally from Lincoln County, in fact, I don't even live in Lincoln County, I live in Campbell County, but I've worked for Energy Express for, I guess, a total of five, excuse me, four years now, and I understand the benefits of Energy Express, not just to the education community, but to the community as a whole. And unfortunately, this year, I'm not really certain who made the decision, but the decision was made not to have this program in Lincoln County schools. I just want to very quickly just go over some benefits to this program, so you really understand how vital this program is to Lincoln County schools. I teach 10th grade students every single day who cannot read, that's profound, that's profound, it's a serious issue, it's a serious issue, and this program is designed to curb some of those issues, okay? Particularly, if you look on page two, the first slide at the top speaks of the summer slide. We know that students leave in June, and when they leave, they're not in any type of training, many parents do not expose them to literature, to any type of reading, and they suffer from what they call the summer slide. Energy Express is designed to curb that, designed to keep that from happening, all right? So, if you look at this, the top one kinda represents families that are within the middle income average, who, you know, maybe have more opportunities to expose them to literature, and then you see the red one, where you see students who are sliding each summer, as they progress through their education. That red line right there, yeah, that's Lincoln County, that's what happens to our students every summer. So, the program is designed to give students an opportunity to read, to be saturated in what we call print, a print-rich environment. I know Mrs. Lucas had the opportunity to be at West Hamlin last summer, she got to see all the stuff that students were doing. We don't like to call this program a summer, summer school, because it's really not summer school, it's more than that. Students get to come and, and paint all they want to, they get to call their mentors by their first name, I mean, that's really cool to children. This program serves children between first grade and sixth grade. I was in the program myself as a child, when I was in fourth grade, in Pocahontas County, West Virginia. I had a little bit of a, of a reading comprehension issue, my mom felt it would be beneficial, it was the first year it was implemented at the state level, and I so much enjoyed it, and we could see the benefits. As a teacher, I, in the community, in the education community, you know, there's always talk about data, you know, what does the, what does the data prove? The data is here to prove that this program really works, and further literature from the State Department, my director will, will shed light to that, there's, there's data that shows just how effective this program is at teaching students those reading comprehension skills that they're not exposed to. Reading is not the only component of this program, there's a huge nutritional component to this program as well. We all know that there are children that leave our schools every day, and they return the next day without a meal, and this program ensures that they're getting, they're getting two nutritional meals, I believe the literature says that accounts for 52% of their overall nutritional, nutritional need for a day. 52% may not be a considerable amount, but compared to 0%, that's serious, and it's something to take into consideration when you think of this program. So, I guess today, I'm advocating not just for myself as a high school teacher, witnessing students who are suffering from a lack of literature, who do not know how to read, but I'm also advocating for the children of this, of this district, they need this program. I don't think there should be any issue of whether or not to fund this. I know, and I'm not really certain, and I apologize, I'm not really certain where the cutoff is between who funds what, I know that the Extension Office, David Roberts, I know that his office funds a certain percentage of that, and then I understand that Title I funds kinda compensate for the rest of it. Wherever those funds come from, I really think you need to take into consideration this program. You lost three reading sites, three reading sites in the county, one was at Midway, one was at West Hamlin, and one was at Hamlin. Those children are without a reading program, and they need it, they really need it.
Lambert? I think most of us are familiar with Energy Express. Were you a mentor at West Hamlin?
I was, at West Hamlin, I was a site supervisor.
Oh, you were a supervisor?
Yes, yes, I was the supervisor. I served two years as a mentor in Pocahontas County in 2006 and 2007. So, I've been at all levels.
You've done it all, student?
Yep, yep.
Well, we, the superintendent has advised us some of this, and it was like, apparently boiled down to money, obviously. And I guess, some of it is the uniqueness of the food program for Energy Express, you know, for those that don't know, and I'm just gonna share what Ms. Lucas just told us, that from the high school this summer, the high school is gonna provide meals for all the programs that we have throughout the county, for different programs that we will bring to each other. But those are more like bag lunches, but as you know, in Energy Express, you'd have a totally, totally different family atmosphere type thing, which would make it unique, but also, it would require, my understanding, additional type staff in order to do that, you'd have cooks there that are gonna make these home-style meals, opposed to what apparently is the need of being able to make all meals at the high school, then deliver them to the other site, so that's part of it. But ultimately, it's money, but I don't know all the, I think that's what we'd have to fund, I know we've been shared, because you have transportation costs, and I guess the cost of the staff, and all those kind of things, but what am I missing, Mr. Lambert?
Well, when we had to make, you know, a decision, and talk about, I was being advised from the finance office in regard to our past summers, and what monies that we had in order to put into all the different services that we would have to help support the sites, the Energy Express sites, and Ms. Candy gave me the dollar amount, and I think, Ms. Candy, correct me if I'm wrong, we actually ended up spending $30,000 more than what was budgeted for our summer, this budgeted was $50,000, we ended up spending $80,000, which was $30,000 more, and at the time that we have to look at what we will need in the summertime, it's not, it's not, it doesn't line up with the timeframe, it's in the wintertime, it's in January or something, that we would have to make a decision regarding if we could fund, if we could absorb, which we had to absorb, $30,000 last summer, would we have the money to absorb another $30,000? And at that point in time, we did not know when our budget would be mine, we did not know when school was going in, you know, because we were bound to those 180 days, and if we look at the timeframe, we would be cutting it very, very short, close, with what occurred this year for us, as well as trying to take in consideration, when would school begin for us, because at that point in time, we don't know what the calendar is going to be for the, for the year, when will that start? And I know that Energy Express has a certain amount of weeks that, so we have to think, okay, when will school begin, when will we be able to have our facilities ready for our children that are coming in, and our food services, you know, will be providing meals throughout the county for children. I know last summer, the advertisements, the dates of the sites, when they were published in the newspaper, there were posters throughout the county as to where those sites would be, and we're gonna continue to do that, Ms. Powell, you know, sent out the message over the school messenger, you know, where these sites are for children to come, so we, we know that we need to be providing meals, and we are, we will continue to be providing those meals. But there were so many things that we have to consider at that point in time to make that decision, as to whether we would be continuing to have the Energy Express sites. And you mentioned about Title I, we've never utilized Title I funds for Energy Express, you know, and I, I don't, I don't know, you know, about other counties or what they do, and I need to see, there are 37 counties, so there are several that do not, and they probably are looking at the same things that we are, especially during that time of the year, not that I think would be like. We're not fortunate enough to be one of those counties that does have carryover monies, you know, millions, excuse me, millions of dollars of carryover, we have to look at what we are required, and we are required to offer extended school year for our students, you know, disabilities that meet the criteria, we are required to do credit recovery for students. So, I have to first take into consideration those required programs, and, you know, some decisions that are made are, are difficult, you know, decisions to make, but as far as the feeding, we will continue to make sure that if, if those children show up at schools, we're gonna be providing meals for them, and I appreciate you, Governor.
Sure, I'll say just one more thing about the mills, we only had two families that were apart from the program at West Hamlin on a daily basis, the others were there because of Energy Express, so two families benefited from the program apart from Energy Express. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to discuss the money part of it, I just wanted to, to resonate with you, the real issue in this county is, is reading comprehension, and that's what this program does, and I believe that a program that is important to a, to a district, the funds will be made for it, I really believe that. The 37 counties that took it, you know, have it, I think that we, we owe it to ourselves to at least consider, at least investigate what they're doing to make it happen, because their students are benefiting from a program that's worthwhile.
We appreciate you, Mr. Lambert, familiar, many of us with Energy Express, but I don't know exactly the schedule, you know, I see it from what I've heard here, one is the cost issue, the other is the scheduling, where, you know, we're going later in the school year... The other is the scheduling where, you know, we're going later in school year and Energy Express has its seventy weeks required and all that, did that contribute? That, like I say, even though it's not the same, at least they will be providing some type of lunch. But, you know, we'll consider, like you said, we appreciate, and we totally agree with what you're saying, we need to work on that reading reserve. But there are certain, certain programs that we're required to offer.
Oh, sure.
Some things, although, but we'd like to do sometimes we can't, but we'll keep it in mind. Thanks for coming. Okay, Rob Cummins is not going to speak to us tonight. He's going to come, he's got more info. Okay, Dallas Plumley, I don't see Mr. Plumley here, so I think he's okay, he's on campus yet. All right, so we'll move on. Okay, let's go down to the administrative section. Have a motion to look at those, please. Mrs. Smith made the motion, and Mr. Baker second. All yes to go in and discuss?
Sure.
All right, Mrs. Lewis.
Okay. Item A, Southern West Virginia Community and Technical College Student Kelly Poosier to perform elementary observation at Hart's Pre-K eighth second semester. Item B, School Volunteers Who On Occasion May Also Serve As Bus Chevrons Or Provide Transportation For Students To And From Athletic Events, Academic Competitions Or School Activities Who Have Provided For Private Vehicle Or Vehicle Insurance And Have Completed Volunteer Orientation. Item C, Five Additional Employment Days For Her Following Band Directors To Do Academic Band Camp, June twenty-ninth through July the fourth, two thousand fifteen for Secondary and Middle School Students. Item D, Adoption Of The Following Textbooks Recommended By The Two Thousand Fifteen Textbook Committee For A Six-Year Adoption Period According To The Provisions Of West Virginia Code Eighteen Dash Two A Dash I. Books And Materials Have Been Available For Public Review And Comment In The County Office Since April the eighth, two thousand and fifteen. There Were No Comments, Please See. Item E, Is A Revision To The Salary Schedule Number Eighteen To Include Middle School Soccer Coach And Approval To Post This Position At All Middle Schools With Stipulation That At Least Fifteen Players Must Sign That Or Position Will Be Abolished. Item F, Adoption Of A New Job Description And Approval To Post A Position For Career And Technical Education Supervisor. Item G, A Revision To Salary Schedule Number Seventeen To Include Career Technical Education Supervisor. Item H, Ratifying And Approving Two Day Suspension Of Teacher For Violations Of Employing Code Conduct According To provisions Of West Virginia Code Eighteen A Dash Two Dash Eight. To Ratify And Approve Two Day Suspension Of Teachers For Violations Of Employing Code Conduct According To Provisions Of West Virginia Code Eighteen A Dash Two Dash Eight.
Okay, are we kind of going American, I'm American, I'm better English here. Does anybody have any questions on A, B, C, D? More on F?
I do want B.
Okay, B, Brad will go first.
I know that we addressed this issue before, and I know from firsthand experience this year that we do not allow school volunteers to transport children to athletic events. My daughter missed her last middle school track meet this year because of a bus, or bus driver shortage, and parents were not allowed to transport the children to the athletic events. So, morning of the last track meet, they found out they couldn't go. So, why do we keep including this language in here that they may transport to and from athletic events when we know that they're not allowed to do it? I think that puts us on liability risk. We're approving these people to do it, yet we're saying officially the policy is no, you can't. What's going to happen if we keep including this in here? Somebody eventually is going to drive a child to an athletic event when a bus was provided. They're going to have an accident and it's going to, we're going to be violating, I mean, our policy is going to be inconsistent. So, I think we need to either revise this or revisit the policy of allowing parent volunteers who are approved to drive children to and from athletic events. We, I mean, we have a policy, I think, the worst policy at this age, parents cannot do that, right? So, I don't know why we're approving people to do something that's in violation of our own policy.
Well, I've always questioned the insurance bit, because you get insurance for a month, but we approve it for a year, so they could not have insurance a month from now.
Well, true, but even what Rowdy's saying, it contradicts our policy anyway.
I mean, I understand we implemented, the board implemented that policy several years ago following a, an accident involving athletes that resulted in substantial liability that was before my time, but sound reasons for that policy, but we need to be consistent.
I think, one of the things is that they can only transport their own child.
Well, it doesn't stay there.
Yeah, but it's, yeah.
Even that is still, there was a case in West Virginia several years ago of a parent that transported their own child, nobody else, just their own child to an event, had an accident, and sued the Board of Education in one.
And speaking with my lawyer hat on, if we're going to allow even parents to transport their own children to athletic events, I know that they're allowed to transport home from by signing them out. We need a waiver. We need a waiver that's signed, notarized, and returned on behalf of those parents to allow them to transport their own children to and from athletic events. And it's even, I think probably inconsistent with our policy when we allow parents, and I'm grateful that we do, lots of times I can beat the bus home by an hour or an hour and a half with my children. But I guess I need to look at, or I would like to look at our policy and make sure that even allowing parents to sign their children out and take them home doesn't violate their policy. I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to being able to take my children to athletic events or bring them home, but we just need to be consistent and make sure we're not violating our own policy.
I agree, oh, hardly, I think it needs to be revisited. And I hadn't even thought about this sign out, because technically, they shouldn't be allowed to take, shouldn't be allowed to take their child home.
Now, Kettle County will let you bring them home, but you, they have to ride the bus to the children.
But I mean, how do you really, what's the difference?
Well, if you have a sign out sheet.
Well, I mean, if you've got something to wear.
There's probably, there should be a sign out sheet that includes a big waiver at the top of it, and you sign your child out, you've signed that waiver for that event. I mean, we always, as a parent, always have to sign a sign out sheet to take my child home from the event.
That might need to be a little bit more sophisticated.
Probably need to have Leslie draft that sign out sheet. And it needs to be consistent. I don't know that the policy needs revised, I don't know what the policy says.
Well, if it doesn't allow for that, you'd have to.
Yeah, I mean, Leslie just needs to look at the liability aspect of it and make sure that our policy provides, balances the level of protection we need with the practical geography of the county that says that kids that live in Hart's get home an hour and a half later than maybe kids that live here if the bus comes home through Dubon. And allowing a parent to bring them home from Charleston, get them home in thirty-five minutes from Charleston on quarter G is a lot more efficient for that parent child, but we just need to be consistent, protect ourselves from liability on that wild chance that we get that odd situation.
Well, bringing, signing them out to bring them home, just like signing them out of school, you cannot stop the parent from doing that.
I think that's good because, I mean, these kids, most of them have to get up the next day and go to school, the parents have to get out and go to work, and if they can save an hour and a half, you know, I don't blame them, I would want to sign that.
Well, Fred, Fred may have hit the nail on the head.
They stopped him from signing, bringing them home.
And we verified that with the state department, with SSAC, with our counties, and that's, that's true what Mr. Curry is saying, his parents are entitled to those.
But you could have a stipulation in order to do that, they sign them out.
Oh, you do.
Right now, you have to sign.
But you're just asking for, like, a waiver on that signature.
Yeah, I think the sign out sheet should put a little waiver in part.
So, do that and then stipulate if the policy that's permitted or something, right?
Well, I mean, this is where you may all time not be insurance lawyer. Everybody here knows you get insurance for a month to get your trip to life, or you're not willing.
That don't mean you're going to have a six month commitment. But you're not proposing that, that you'd be allowed to take some other kids home, right?
Nah, I'm not going to comment on that.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, our policy, the provision, I don't think should address that.
All I was going to say is that I have a fourth daughter that doesn't belong to me that travels everywhere.
Uh, you're on camera.
I said I wasn't commenting on the other issue, I'm just generic.
Right. So, anyway, you know, with the possibility Mr. Baker brought up here of making any policy provisions that are necessary and legal, and then having, if need be, a stipulation there that a waiver, a provision be added or whatever. Good point there, Rowdy. Okay, anybody? F, we haven't got that, Mr. Wilson. I want to go to E. Here's the question. Okay, middle school soccer. Who's the expert, Mr. McKinnon? Okay. And where we are now is you've surveyed all the schools and I'm counting now, Hart's is on board also. They've got a location to have soccer too, right? Okay. Now, way this is stated, Jeff, is that in order to have boys soccer at any of the schools or girls soccer, they have fifteen participants of that gender, right?
That's right.
Okay. Now, what happens, and we've talked before, if they, if a school did not have enough boys or girls, they could have a coed team at Hamlin and stuff, right? Okay. So, my question is, if we go ahead and post a, a girl's coach and a boy's coach for all of the four schools, we employ those eight people, what happens at Hamlin and they don't have, they got enough boys for their team, or they don't have enough boys and girls to have to have a coed team? Who's their coach?
Well, we, Mrs. Lewis, I actually kicked around several different scenarios today. And in that particular situation, I mean, if there was enough boys to have a team, I think we look at that first as a possibility that there be a boys team, not necessarily a coed team. But if there's girls, if there's interest there for that to happen, I certainly think we look at that coach, person who would be the boys coach, serve as the coed.
Now, is that, and that person's hit present just because of his team had enough people? So, the girls, I'm using Hamlin as our new term, generic person to school here, that they had enough boys at Hamlin to have for each team. They didn't have enough girls, they'd have to attend. So, the Hamlin boys coach would be the coach of that coed team, and the girls coach that we employed at Hamlin would not have a job.
I have to be present, we'll have, you know, final saying what that would look like. Remember was decision made, you know, the middle school would be coed? I mean, maybe that's what.
I understand.
Then.
Why not do it this way? Why not write the job description such that the position's posted subject, boys soccer coach at Hamlin Middle School, subject to fifteen available male students, girls soccer coach, subject to fifteen available girls. So, then, if you have twenty girls and you have five boys, the girls coach gets the benefit or absorbs the five boys that play, actually at that point, they play a boys schedule as well.
And that's how I see it.
Yeah, posting so that each job is dependent on there being sufficient number of players. If there are not a sufficient number of girls that have a girls team, then the girls coach hired. The boys, the boys coach takes everybody.
I think what you talked about, that it's, yeah, also that's part of the, I think, job description.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, because we're going to go ahead and post these positions, that we employ these eight people, what would happen? You know, hopefully, we'll get enough boys and girls to have all eighteen of them, but if not, I just, I'm thinking, you know, if you didn't have enough, then who would be the coach? Maybe the one that had the fifteen or the one who would be the coach?
I'm going to say, whichever coach had enough players to build their own team, should be, I mean, that's the way the job description should be written. That's only fair, I mean, it's, well, if a coach does a better job recruiting the competition, so eight meals for it.
It makes sense, as long as it's clear is all I would say. On the job posting, I don't know about the, necessarily on the job description, but the job posting made it clear.
More make it clearer.
Yeah, the job posting would reflect that.
Now, what about the situation that could happen when maybe you have eight boys and seven girls?
The boys coach, he can eat the death of one.
But once again, I think on the job posting, it should stipulate that, that way you.
Well, if they got equal number.
Flip a coin.
We talked about this conversation.
We get into the issue where, you know, a coach, the coaching position is legally, it's a professional, you must be a professional. Professional is always hired before a service or before a citizen, because that is a professional vacancy. The only time that we hire a service for that position is if there aren't any professionals that apply. The only, and then, you know, they get evaluated as well. But, but it comes along with recommendations from the principal, to never hire without the recommendations from the principal coach, you know, because they're the ones that do the evaluations and the ones that, in that. But those are the things that we have to look at as well.
Then you got the person as being your servant, who's not a school employee at all.
And, yes, and that we have to be, if you do not have any one that applies that is an employee, and again, but they have to go through the training, they have to go through getting that coaching authorization before they, before the State Department will issue a certificate for them to be hired. So, there are things that.
But Mr. Curry's, he has, I didn't ask for my question.
Well, I was trying to just go around it, so.
Oh, you're right.
So, get my head.
Just trying to tell you, Fred, there's a lot of other criteria we can use to make that choice.
Well, I don't want to do that.
All these things you just.
Professional, service.
Well, yeah, but forget them.
If they're the sign.
Everything's a. Principal, principal review, principal recommendation, that's how we would do that. Or we could have a penalty shootout, shots at Golden.
We did talk about the friend, because who's, who would be more skilled? And I think the principal would have to do an interview, because just because you've coached a long time, you may not know anything about soccer. And this person may know a lot and have a lot of knowledge already about soccer, so I think that would be.
Well, we're probably going to have to hire these people before we even know them are on teams.
Exactly. That's what.
That's why the job posting needs to stipulate all of these scenarios, even Fred's files and everything. Because I would want to just give him half each.
And I think we do put, posting spaced on, I think, on our old fifteen or whatever.
Obviously, things we've said, it's going to be a long posting. Posting, definitions or something. Okay, we're getting on that then. Okay, F, anybody have a question about that?
Yes, that's a, it's a. Gone through the CTE supervisor job description several times. Only have a problem with one thing, and that is on E, Other Duties And Responsibilities, number thirteen. And my concern is this, I'm wondering if we can work something into the job description that will, in some way, I don't use the word, limit the amount of time that the supervisor would spend on other duties as might be assigned by building principle.
What are you concerned you might be assigned?
I'm concerned that that person will start out as a CTE supervisor a hundred percent of the time, and things keep getting loaded on to him and loaded on to him till finally he's more concerned with other things than what we have intended.
Mr. Wilson, what if we added to that, other duties is assigned that's directly associated with CTE department?
Good.
So, that way it's clear.
That satisfies me.
Did you get that, Mrs. Lambert?
I'll, I'll.
I'll get it together.
I'll go ahead and make that revision.
Okay. You happy with that, Miss Wilson?
I'm happy. Let's move on.
I'm not, I have a comment on that.
Okay, Mr. Curry, go ahead.
I wanted to make that number fourteen. I think we, as I looked through there, I didn't see anything to where one of their duties and responsibilities was to meet the businesses, to determine job opportunities, job requirements, and I think that should be one thing, unless I've overlooked the check.
Business community.
Yeah, where's that, number nine? Number nine?
Yeah.
Okay, let me see. Okay.
Number nine.
It can stay there, there.
Okay.
All right. All right. Over, let's go back to qualifications, number five. We have here knowledge and experience working in a vocational school preferred. I remember we first talked, we never talked about this before, I was thinking, and I, I'm okay with that, but I was thinking of a person that might have a background in some type of vocational trade and not necessarily worked in a school. As it being a preferred criteria, maybe somebody who's a plumber for twenty-five years, and oh, it is preferred, not required. Right, well, this is vocational school, but it doesn't give that person that was a plumber for twenty years some...
If you, if you have someone that's working in a trade area, more than likely, that person's not going to have an administrative degree.
Well, that's what it says preferred, though.
More teachers or teachers.
But we can change that to say vocational trade.
Well, I, I mean, I'm okay, but it's, just right there, vocational schools, I don't know how, like I say, it's preferred, so you don't have to have it.
But if you look back to one, if you had required, say, the plumber, and not have the teacher, so to...
Well, then they wouldn't be eligible.
Right.
Right.
You'd get, you'd get the teachings with it, but you couldn't get them out of trade yet.
Right. I'm going to say, if they, if they had all these other things, they could, they had administrative degree, and they had teacher, did, did all these other things. In addition to that, somewhere in their past, they'd also worked in some type of trade, about vocational position, that they'd be an education.
Well, in schools.
The school, the board school is what's getting out there. And maybe just say, oh, it's a vocational program. Yeah, and that way it could be kind of generic.
So if you use program, it refers you right back to a CTE program or something that makes you...
Setting.
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 This is obvious, sort of TV show.
Well, but, you know, the, the theoretical plumber Steve's talking about's not being a vocational programmer, saying he's worked twenty-five years as a commercial industrial plumber.
Yeah.
Vocational occupation. I'm working in business or occupational occupation.
That takes out somebody that worked at the school, then.
I, I like traditional occupation, does that work instead of school?
Not, not for me. I mean, we have the, the qualifications they have to have.
What do you all think?
I mean, that's science, when you enter the road, the CTE...
He got it.
He got more people up.
Okay. Jeff, what do you think? Does that make sense?
Because it is preferred, I mean, to me...
Yeah, they don't have to have it, I'm just saying, if they have all these other things, in addition, they had a previous career, or they did that, which is...
Which is possible. That's possible, if there'd be somebody out there that would fit that description.
All right. Okay, F, we're through with. G, I think we're through with. Okay. We're down to H. And Mrs. Lucas has requested executive session for items H and I, personnel matter, please. Mr. Baker makes the motion.
I'll say.
Seconded by Mr. Curry, going to the executive session to discuss the personnel matter. Is that an all yes vote to go in at seven fourteen PM?
Yes.
Okay.